Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of our Lord and our Savior, with which His hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methpin.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marcus Zepity.
Here.
Nate Albert. Joe Kugel.
Here.
Okay, for the record, I did receive an email from Alderman Albert. He is unavailable this evening, so he is excused for tonight's meeting. And just a quick announcement, there is a very good chance of some severe weather this evening. So I'm asking the police chief to keep his eye on the radar. If the weather gets to the point where we need to be in a safer place, we'll stop the meeting immediately, and we'll all head together down to the basement area. Okay, before the city council, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on July first, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on July first, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Marcus Zepity.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Jennifer Methpin.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to-
Excuse me, just wanted- did I not hear- did you call Glenn Conklin?
No, I didn't.
Oh, for the attendance?
For attendance, yeah. Glenn Conklin, for attendance.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item. It's to approve a resolution for a forensic consulting services agreement binding between the city of Crest Hill and Sickich LLC. For personnel matters that were discussed previously in executive session, the agreement is in your packet.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Oberlin, to approve a resolution approving a forensic consulting service agreement binding between the city of Crest Hill, County Illinois, and Sickich LLC. Questions or comments? Ah, yes.
I just have a comment. I'm sorry. Can I clarify?
You want to go ahead?
I just want to clarify that even though the majority of us are very conservative about spending taxpayer money, it is really important to hire this company for the better future and transparency of the city due to mismanaging taxpayer money, time theft, and legal searches. I just want to make that clear because since the agenda is posted online and I got a few questions, but I know I don't want it to answer, so I'm going to just make this statement publicly. That is really important to take this measurement at this point.
Okay, I was just wondering, I know we had mentioned talking in executive session about putting a cap as to how much we were going to spend, and there was nothing in here on that. Are we not going to have a cap as the amount as to what we're going to spend with this company, or?
This is the agreement to have the representative of Sickich come in to get from you in executive session.
Okay.
The parameters of what you want, this is merely for them to come in and speak to you in executive session.
That is my next question.
If the decision is made to go forward, that next resolution and/or agreement will have all of the necessary parameters once they give us a quote for that service.
Okay, I was just going to ask that other question of, you know, when they were going to come in because it was tougher than coming in to talk to us.
We're working on scheduling now.
Okay, real good. Thank you. Roll call, Karen.
Marcus Zepity.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Jennifer Methpin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution number one-two-four-four.
Aside from that, I don't have any other agenda items, but would be happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
Any questions of city attorney?
I hope you had a wonderful birthday, sir.
I did, and a nice vacation as well. It's good to be back, see all your smiling faces.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Tony Graf. Good evening, Tony.
Good birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
We have a great night tonight. At the very beginning, we are looking at an update from Ron Metzger in regards to some potential retail at Plainfield and Gaylord Road. There's some pre-standing lots there. Looks like Ron's little report is Scooter's Coffee Drive-Thru, possibly a few other multi-tenant commercial buildings would be in that location. The next thing in my report was the Grand Prairie Crossing. The very first board meeting was conducted on July second. All board members were present, all six communities. They did their basic groundwork for the president, vice president, secretary treasurer, and they approved a project manager agreement with Joliet, and then there was some other agreements that they were all basically like housekeeping, what I would call. Stateville Correctional, we did get contacted by some, the engineering firm that was hired to do some due diligence on just some site assessment, but not going really on the property for that, more looking at where is the pipes and the sewer, the water, looking for ownership from who owns what side of the roads and the water tower. So Ron and I had a nice Zoom meeting with the company. In about two to three weeks, they will get back to us. They have to give a report back to the Department of Corrections. So at least we're getting a little more information that they're doing some due diligence with the engineers. The main purpose that they were tasked with is to see if they could find the most open space to where the facility could fit in green space area, which we know there's a lot of good green space out there, but there is some floodplain issues and there's environmental, and of course, there's a lot of, I would say, things that are in the ground, they're going to have to find out what's there. But so they want to try to get the, let's say where the corn grows, more or less, is probably the best location for the new facility, which I think in our interest, we've always wanted them to stay away from that two-hundred acres by Division and Weber, so that could stay available for possible commercial mix use in the future. Our job announcements, updates, tonight you have the Public Works Director. We're looking at professional outreach for that. Community Development Director, we'll talk further on that in executive session, about final candidate update. We posted again for the HR manager and the Public Works Maintenance Workers. They've gone through all their applicants, and they've created a list for civil service. So hopefully, we'll be able to get two more people hired because there's two openings right now for replacements with Public Works. The old city hall did some work, our crew did, with the landscaping cleanup, and we'll start working on a few other things after what happens with the vote tonight. Mosquito spraying. I know Mike sent me back a quick email in regards to with the weather tonight. You haven't got any notice yet, are they canceled yet, Mike?
Nope, it's still on, but I have my phone with me just in case.
Okay. And the monument signs, the one that's, everyone probably goes around and sees most of the time, is on Weber and McGilvery. The lighting and landscape and restoration will all take at least another two or three weeks, correct, Ron?
Correct.
The new city hall, got a new location. We'll show you next Monday. Take a picture of it up there. I think it's, it could fit. Looking at it, it did fit on the side of the wall where you guys showed me where that pillar was. So I'll get some more photographs, and we'll look at it again next Monday. Water meter replacement project. They had a good staff meeting this morning with the contractor. It looks like we are coming up with a strategy of how we can make that September date for water meters. I think we're down to about sixty meters still that we have to get into the homes to get them replaced. It was nice to see it, our contractor and our staff all together in one meeting, working out how to communicate better and get the work orders. But it generates overtime still, some of the overtime because it's going to be, it's our crew doing the replacements now, not the contractor's crew. So some of these are going to be on Saturday, so we'll be creating some overtime probably over the next three or four weeks to try to get this project done by our target date, which was September first. Nothing new to report on the West Plant, the Lockport Township. We have that on the agenda tonight. Everything was approved by their board for the intergovernment agreement. The crime lab, nothing new on the crime lab. And then there's some events coming up. Y'all make those announcements later, with the citywide garbage sale, and then meet at the Soza Park event. I think that's on Wednesday at six P.M., if I remember that right. A call from the White Oak Library, talked to the director over there. Thanks from a lead from Nate. The Fall Festival is going to be September twenty-ninth, and they'll be doing the overflow using our parking lot, which I think would be great. Police Department's looking to move the National Night Out to, under another name called Neighbor's Night Out, sort of taking our theme, city and neighbors, and they've moved it over to September fourth. One of the reasons is the other times in November, I mean, in August, there's a lot of other festivals going on and trying to get some other agencies and that to come over. We're in a lot of competition. So I think it was a great idea that they're going to move it over, and I think that'd be September fourth. Sounds like a great date. Anything else? I'd be glad to answer any questions.
How about your two agenda items?
Two agenda items. Oh, the first one is the outreach recruitment services by Gov. H.R. That's for the Director of Public Works. We're going to have, we requested services after the work session, talked for a few minutes. What's our next step with our Public Works Director? We know we're on a time clock with Mike that probably by September, October, he'll be out of his hours, he's able, eligible to work under his pension. So we'll move forward with that to go for the outreach. And then the recruitment services for the city administrator's position. You have the pack in the packet. It's twenty-four thousand dollars. I did ask them to take a closer look at that twenty-four thousand because some of the work doesn't have to be repeated. We already have a brochure together. They've already met with the council back in January of last year. Do we really need to spend more of their time to have them come out and meet again? What they did suggest was still to do a virtual and do a more of a workshop session on the trends of recruitment right now, especially in with our timeline, August is getting started. You're going to go all the way into mid-November, maybe late-October, by the time you'll find a candidate and offer the job. It's kind of a area where it's, needs probably further discussion because, you know, it's six months of a contract. Because of the mayor's election, you can only do the contract up to May fifth. So they have a little concern with an expectation that they would like to have a full, more full discussion with the council in regards to trying to move this along, and also let's try to set the parameters with negotiations. When we do find a candidate, maybe have that pre-parameters already set of what would be acceptable to offer to a candidate. So we cut that time down, and it was nobody's fault in regards to negotiations, but there is a lot of negotiations going back and forth with the candidate versus, you know, with the city council. So they believe maybe we could tighten that up a little better and have those, you sort of know what you want, you know what you're going to want to spend, and this will help also with recruitment. So they're offering to do a virtual either on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth. I think the twenty-ninth is a date for the Skidditch to come in, so maybe try to shoot for the twenty-second. They have like it's a one-hour presentation and discussion, and this is an open meeting with Gov. H.R.'s, you know, expert to come in.
Have you asked them if we can get any discount on the costs since we didn't have the best candidate that they offered us the first time?
I did ask them. I told them we were disappointed, you know, council was disappointed in regards to tier-one and tier-two candidates. They gave us a thousand, and they call it repeat customer. And then I went back to them going, I think we need to have further discussion because I think a lot of the work that's in phase one is already done. But they're concerned that if they shortcut it without having more discussion with the city council, what's your expectation? So if you approve this tonight, I would recommend not executing it till you have that first workshop. And then we, and I would tell them, you still would like to have further consideration with the cost. So I think in their motion, they could do that to protect us and not spend the whole twenty-four thousand. Recommend it. Don't execute it till after the workshop and see if we get a new price.
Well, but if it's approved, and they decide after the workshop they don't want, then they're going to have to unapprove it. I would recommend that you not approve it until you know what you're getting.
Okay.
But would that delay the process of them coming here and doing the presentation?
It will because of the long time until August fifth. If we had the following Monday, it'd just be one week delay, but now we got two weeks because of-
This is very important, so we need to vote for it, and if they can give us a discount, obviously, no matter what we have to do it. But it doesn't hurt to ask the question if we're able to get any discount.
I did ask that, and they did not give us one.
Okay, so that means we have to vote for it.
Are you looking for a motion?
So I think we need to take item three first, which is the approval of the Public Works Agreement, or Director of Public Works Recruitment Agreement.
Motion would be in order.
Some moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for the consideration of improvement contract for Director of Public Works. Questions or comments?
And this one is seven thousand for the Public Works?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor.
Roll call, Karen.
Jennifer Methpin.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Zepity.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then with respect to number four would be the approval of the city administrator recruitment services by Gov. H.R. I believe that's twenty-four thousand, or is it twenty-three after the thousand-dollar discount?
It's twenty-four.
Can we, can we make a motion to approve it with a console that we might alter the price? I mean, is that doable or no?
I think you can approve it up to that amount and authorize the city administrator to try to negotiate it down. If you can negotiate it to less, then you've spent less money than you've authorized.
I'll make a motion to approve this up to that amount.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal. To approve, approve for city administrator recruitment services by Gov. H.R. USA up to twenty-four thousand dollars. Questions or comments?
I have a comment again. Steve Golden left in October, and we took forever to even post the job. That's why we are where we are today. Number two, we have a solution in front of us, Mayor, that you refuse to go with the majority of the council on, and that can solve the situation until the election. But because you don't want to go with what the council wishes as the majority, we are where we are today. I see it very difficult for anyone to come at this point, knowing that they're going to have a couple months of a job. But maybe the next step should be, maybe we should look for an interim as well, if the full-time permit, administrator won't be able to make it, maybe we can make an interim at this point. Can we make that possible as well, a request from Gov. H.R.?
We have an interim now.
Which, we're not going to discuss it here, but we know the majority of the council wants the change.
Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, I just feel that to go now and to try to hire somebody with a few months before the election, I don't think someone's going to want to come here for a few months and going through all that time, effort, money being spent. I think we should wait till after the election or a month before, start the recruitment process. So that this way, once we get into it, we have whoever's going to be seated here as mayor, so that that person, when we're recruiting him, knows, okay, here's the mayor for the next four years, and that they have a job for the next four years. That's what I would like to see done.
Anybody else?
Is it possible to extend the contract to this person that goes past the election? Or is everything tied into the election?
It's tied in.
Not according to Illinois state statute. It's tied into every mayor's election. Correct, Mike?
That's correct.
I agree with Alderman Gazal to post it as an interim, seeing as that we're so close to the election, it would be hard for someone to take that chance, not knowing that they would have employment after the election. But I think posting him an interim is more appropriate at this time.
I mean, I would go for both.
Anybody else?
I didn't hear Claudia say.
I would go for both, the both options, because you never know, someone might want to come, knowing that they're going to do a good job and possibly they have the opportunity to stay.
For the record, I agree with Alderman Dyke. I made those comments several weeks ago also. I think with the timeline that's before us with ten months to go, it would be best to wait, and I agree with what he made comments in regards to. With that being said, there's no further questions or comments. I would ask for a roll call on the motion and the second, Karen.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Zepity.
Yes.
Joe Kugel.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
Jennifer Methpin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, anything else, Tony?
I'm here.
Any comments or questions of city administrator?
I have a comment for you, Tony. I reached out to you on Friday when I found out from a few people that upper management, a lot of few upper management, the mayor and yourself, heard about the union representative coming here, and you stated that you heard rumbling. So I Googled the word rumbling, and the meaning is you have heard a rumor or about something, correct? I believe it's very unprofessional as an administrator that you should have reached out to us to let us know of this rumbling. We know that the mayor won't do it, but you should have done it as a representative to the city and the council as a whole. If you should hear rumbling again, can you please share with us to avoid all kind of embarrassment or to be prepared next time?
Well, if there's a rumor going around, it's a rumor. It's not factual in nature. I didn't know if it was true or untrue. So I'm trying to figure out how do I notify you about rumors, rumbling, whatever you want to call it. It was a rumor that some people were coming to a meeting.
Well, I see a lot of rumors on social media, and I hear about people wanting to come to city council. I have sent screenshot to the mayor. I've sent a screenshot to the previous city administrator, to many department heads, to notify them that, hey, there is in case something happening. The whole idea I'm saying this, but we could avoid a lot of things before they come here publicly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tony. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Public Works Director, Mike Ulyts. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have one agenda item. It is the approval of pay request number eighteen for viscerine construction. Construction, with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and disbursement for a total amount of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. This covers work performed between June first and June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved, is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Methman, for approval of pay request number eighteen from Vissering Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and disbursement for a total amount of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Karen.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methman?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That is all I have, but I will entertain any questions if there are any.
Any questions at public works?
Yes, I have a question. I found out last meet at the park, the barrel wasn't there, the rain barrel? And is there a way, can we still do the contract on that, because it was missed by the previous city administrator?
There wasn't a rain barrel there, is that what you're saying?
There's no rain barrel, apparently there's no contract for it, we never did the contract. Can you look into it, because a couple residents, they do prefer to get a discount for it?
Yeah, I, yes.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Mike, I wanna thank you for getting those lights on top of those signs on Rainer Avenue. Do you have a cost on those, I forgot to ask you, how much that costed for that?
I do, but not off the top of my head, I was, it was very cheap, in my opinion, to do that.
Okay, could you send that to me?
Yeah.
Maybe we should also, where the no truck signs are along Broadway, on all the streets that go up into the city, maybe we should add some there also, to prevent them from going up Cheney or any of the other streets, all right?
Yep.
All right, thanks, appreciate it. All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one item on the agenda tonight, looking for a motion to approve the resolution approving agreement for the public works facility rear yard regrading improvement by in between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Austin Tyler Construction, Inc., for the amount of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. This was awarded by council at the June seventeenth meeting.
Motion would be in order?
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Woman Gazal, seconded by Alder Person Overland, for the approval of a resolution approving an agreement for public works facilities, rear yard regrading improvement by in between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Austin Tyler Construction Incorporated, for an amount of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methman?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number one, two, four, five.
That's all I have, unless there's any questions?
Any questions of city engineer?
I have a quick question for you. The nominee that they put on Webber Road, is the back of it gonna have any sign, because it looks kinda odd?
The signs? No, they're blank as they currently.
It's gonna be blank?
Yeah, we didn't propose anything on the backside of those.
Just because the way it's curved, coming from southbound to north?
Yeah, no, we did not, I mean, that's something we can talk about later, if we wanted to have somebody come out and add something onto the back, but part of the original proposal was just front, front of the signs, nothing on the backside. And you are correct, that, that one there, you can kinda see from both directions, or the one on Broadway, you, you can't.
Yeah, I think we made a mistake with that.
Yeah.
So maybe something we should look into?
We can come back and talk about that, I can bring that to a work session, I'll talk to the contractor, maybe get a rough price of some thoughts, you know, to put on the back, like, thank you for visiting, or something like that, just to get a rough price.
That's a good one, thank you for visiting.
Okay.
Ron, I had a question, I, I thought that those welcome monuments were gonna be more in the order of what's out in front of here, and at public works, like more of a stone look versus a cast?
No, they are all stone, those are all large pieces of limestone.
But they're...
The only different...
They're not more, like, these have more of a textured feel to them.
These here, we did a rock finish on them, we did not do a rock finish on the welcome signs.
I thought we wanted to, I thought the discussion was to keep it consistent.
Uh, no, the, the welcome signs, we were gonna have, as they are, are there, we were gonna do a rock finish for the ones at our facilities, to kinda show something different for the facilities, but not throughout the entire city.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our community development director, Brian Metzner, good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I have five items on the agenda, all, all five items were discussed at last Monday's workshop meeting. Item number seven, the first item under community development, we're seeking a council motion to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit and setback variations with respect to certain real property located within the corporate boundaries of Crest Hill, the application of Midwest industrial funds. This is the ordinance that's been prepared to approve the special use permit for the preliminary and final P U D plans for M I F's proposed construction of a new hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse distribution office building on the eight-point acres, that's located at the southern termination of Advantage Avenue in the industrial park. The plant commission recommended unanimous approval of this, subject to a series of conditions. The ordinance that went out with the agenda packet has been revised, I think the city attorney distributed copies of the updated ordinance, both a clean version and a red-lightened version that highlights the revisions that have been made to the ordinance since it was originally distributed last week. The revisions I would classify primarily as minor clarifications, some typos and Scribner's errors. There were two additional conditions that were added to the list of conditions within the ordinance at the request of M I F. These two conditions are the same conditions that the city included in the similar ordinance that was passed for the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot building that M I F is currently constructing immediately to the east of this subject property. Staff and the attorney have reviewed the conditions, we don't have any issues with them being incorporated in the ordinance, and I, with that, I'd be, do my best to answer any questions you might have about the project or the ordinance. And there are representatives of M I F here tonight that also can address any questions that the city council may have.
Any questions of Ron Metzner first, from city council? Hearing none, are there any comments from the developer or the consultant? None? Okay. I would ask, you have, you do have before you an ordinance, so I would ask if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment for or against the request of M I F granting a special use permit and setback variation from the building setback of thirty feet to fifteen feet, with respect to certain real property located within the corporate boundaries of the city of Crest Hill, and the rear yard parking lot, the asphalt setback from five feet to zero feet. If you would like to, any comments for or against the request, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against the request of M I F for a building setback and a rear yard parking lot setback, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And a third time, if anyone would like to speak for or against the request of M I F. Let the record show that no one has approached before, before the podium, to the city council, you do, you do have an approval from the plant commission. You also have before you an ordinance granting special use permit and setback variations with respect to certain real property located within the corporate boundaries of Crest Hill, the application of Midwest Industrial Funds Incorporated. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Woman Gazal, seconded by Alder Man Dyke, questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methman?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance number one, nine, nine, zero.
Okay, you're all good, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city of Crest Hill for the second time within six months, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay.
All right, one, one final note on that particular project, you might recall that last Monday we did talk about a development agreement, and I just want, that goes along with this project that the city's negotiating. The city passed a similar development agreement for the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand square foot facility that's under construction. We are actively working with M I F and the city attorney, M I F's attorney, to finalize the language of that development agreement, and we expect to bring that back for your final review and approval at the August, the first meeting in August, I just wanna make sure that, that you know that didn't get lost in the process here, that that's gonna be coming back your way soon. The next item that we have on the agenda that we're looking for, city council motion is item eight.
Hey, hey, Ron, hang on a sec, should we do a separate motion on that, on the contribution?
No, it's not ready yet.
Okay.
It's coming back to the first meeting in August. The next item on the agenda is we're looking for a motion to approve the ordinance approving zoning setback variations for protection bollards at twenty-three seventy-eight Plainfield Road. This again was a unanimous recommendation by the plant commission to allow the owner of the property at the southeast corner of Caton Farm Road and Route Thirty, to install a row of twenty-two bollards along, along the Caton Farm Road property line, to protect the building from further incidents with vehicles. The building's been hit by vehicles on a couple of different occasions. It's a pretty straightforward application, it's for safety purposes, definitely some unique circumstances that justify the approval of the variance in this case.
So moved, is presented.
Second.
Hang on, this was the plant commission recommendation also, correct?
That's correct, unanimous.
Are there any questions of Ron Metzner in regards to this first? Hearing none, is there anybody representing twenty-three seventy-eight Plainfield Road?
Yes.
Any comments you'd like to make, sir, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Amitaj Mehta, and thank you for considering this application for the bollards on the Caton Farm Road. We have put already, I think, twenty bollards on the other side, and it looks good, so this side will just give more protection to the building.
I agree with you, after two accidents of vehicles running into that building, we need to give you a little bit more protection than you had before.
That would be awesome, thank you.
I would ask anybody from city council, have any questions for the applicant?
We are happy that you're doing that.
They're also in nice neutral colors, so they're not an eyesore.
Thank you, thank you, we talked a lot about it, white, yellow, yellow was too much, so gray.
Lime green's always a nice choice.
Thank you.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's definitely, summer color.
Okay, thank you. All right, for the people in the audience, if there's anyone that would like to speak for or against the request of Mr. Amitaj Mehta, for the property located at twenty-three seventy-eight Plainfield Road, and the zoning setback variation for protected bollards, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second call, if anyone would like to speak for or against the application request from Mr. Amitaj Mehta, from twenty-three seventy-eight Plainfield Road, for a zoning setback variation for protection bollards, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. And a third request, anybody like to speak for or against your request for protection bollards at twenty-three seventy-eight Plainfield Road, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To the city council, you have before you an ordinance, this was approved also at the plant commission, you have before you an ordinance approving a fence setback variation to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the application of A V shuttle at twenty-three seventy-eight Plainfield Road, motion would be in order.
So moved.
I already had a motion.
Right, it was already on.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, the second was by Alder Sapity. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, Karen.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methman?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance number one, nine, nine, one.
Okay, you are all set, thank you. Okay, Ron, your third request.
Item nine on the agenda, we're seeking a motion from the city, city council to approve a resolution approving and authorizing a contract to sell the old city hall property at sixteen-ten Plainfield Road Crest Hill to QuickTrip Corporation. Back in early June, the city council approved a letter of intent with QuickTrip for the sale of the property to them. For the last month, city staff and the city attorney have been negotiating with QuickTrip representatives on the contract that's included in the agenda packet backup materials. I would say with confidence that the terms of the contract are consistent, substantially consistent with the letter of intent that the city council reviewed and approved about a month, a half ago now. I did prepare a memo dated July fifteenth that was included in the agenda packet backup materials, which, which highlights some of the most important key provisions in the contract, I'd be happy to address any questions that you have about that. I know QuickTrip is anxious to move forward with the due diligence on this property, so hopefully the city council can make a final decision on this tonight.
Any questions or comments to Ron Metzner in regards to the request? Hearing none? Is there anyone in the audience representing QuickTrip here? Okay. I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment for or against the request of the sale of the property at sixteen-ten Plainfield Road, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To the city council, you have before you a resolution approving and authorizing a contract to sell the old city hall property sixteen-ten Plainfield Road Crest Hill to QuickTrip Corporation, motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Man Dyke, seconded by Alder Person Overland, to approve a resolution and authorizing a contract to sell the old city hall property sixteen-ten Plainfield Road Crest Hill, Illinois, to QuickTrip Corporation, questions or comments?
I have a comment, just to read what I've said before. The only good thing about this is that there is a cash deal, one point six five million, I am against it for these exact reasons, I stated before, this will be number eight gas station in the city of Crest Hill, we are a land lock, it's gonna be placed across from a retirement area at Willow Falls, and I think it's a bad choice and a bad decision to put a gas station right next to a retirement community. So that's my comments.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Daryl Jefferson?
No.
Claudia Gazal?
No.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
No.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Methman?
Yes.
No, motion carried, yeah, motion carried, resolution number one, two, four, six.
One, two, four, six?
Yes. That's not correct. We have three, three no, three yes, and four no's, so how can motion be carried?
That's correct.
Where was four no's?
No, we got three no's.
We got three no's.
Three no's.
There's three no's.
What did you say the three?
Were you a no, Jennifer?
I was a yes.
Oh, okay, I thought you said no.
Oh, she said yes.
Okay.
Jennifer, Scott, Tina, and Joe were yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
What did you say? Resolution number was?
One, two, four, six.
Thank you.
Next one, Ron.
Next one is item ten on the agenda, at the end of last year, the city council reviewed and ultimately approved a commercial flagpole variation request from Reza Auto Repair, with their application for their variance, they also requested consideration for a reduced or relief from the city's commercial variance application fees for this particular item. Normally, the city charges a thousand dollars, Reza paid that thousand dollars to move through the city's variation process. During the, the review of that, the city council seemed inclined to change the, or gave direction... During the review of that, the City Council seemed inclined to change the, or gave direction staff to change the city's fee structure so that commercial flagpole variations, application fees would be reduced from 750, or from 1,000 down to 250. I believe it was the City Council's intent to have staff issue a refund to Reza for the difference between what they paid, $1,000, and what the fees were reduced to after they applied, $250, which would mean that that would be a $750 refund to Reza. There's really no clear direction documented anywhere in the minutes or any ordinance that the City Council approved regarding this refund. So in talking with the city attorney, we felt it would be appropriate to have the City Council approve a resolution memorializing the council's approval of a fee refund for Reza Auto Repair in the amount of $7. And that's what's included in the agenda packet backup for your consideration.
Any questions of Ron in regards to this request? Motion would be in order.
So moved as presented.
Second?
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Man-Gazal to approve a resolution approving a variance application fee refund for Reza's auto in the amount of $750. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metzman?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overly?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number 1247.
Okay, and the last one, Ron?
Item 11 on the agenda, we're seeking a motion from the Council to approve a resolution approving a policy for processing Plan Commission recommendations. As we discussed last Monday, the city doesn't have any clear policy on what if any Plan Commission recommendations come forward for discussion at a workshop meeting with the City Council. As a result, the default practice has been that all Plan Commission recommendations, regardless of the complexity of the project or the controversial nature of the project, come to a workshop meeting. The policy seeks to streamline the process and clarify it a bit so that non-controversial, unanimous recommendations from the Plan Commission would automatically bypass the workshop agenda and come to the City Council. Any recommendation that would come out of the Plan Commission that would not be a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission would automatically be placed on a workshop agenda in any special use. Planned unit development application requests would also be placed on the workshop agenda. And then finally, if anybody applied for an appeal to an administrative decision that a staff member made at Crest Hill regarding the administration of the zoning ordinance, that would also come to a workshop meeting from the Council for the Council's discussion. It's pretty straightforward policy, and we're seeking a motion to approve it as written.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
I would like to have all the recommendations come to the Council in a workshop work session just because we need to know what we're going to be voting on before and able to have discussion about it in a work, in a work session type scenario. So I, again, differentiating what, who considers what topic, what was the term? Controversial, that's up for, that's a judgment call, and everyone may have a different idea of what that is. So I prefer to have involvement rather than, than not.
And as I stated at the work session, we talked about this, I said the same thing, that although I have great respect for you, Ron, you're just here for short duration, and we don't know who's coming next, and it is a really, a judgment call, and words are used here that aren't always used properly. So I don't, I want to see what's going on before I vote on it and discuss it too. So nothing against you.
I have to agree with both of you because I made the same comment, so I'm pulling my motion, I don't know what happened to me.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, is there a second?
Second.
You, Scott?
Yes.
We have a second by Alderman Dyke for a resolution approving a policy for processing Plan Commission recommendations. Questions or comments?
Kind of a comment. I'd like to thank you, Ron, and as well as Dave, I'd throw him in here too for you all's effort of trying to modernize the departments of the city and bring things up to speed with the rest of America. So I hope while you're here, you continue to do so.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Jennifer Metzman?
No.
Claudia, Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
No.
Tina Overly?
No.
Mark Sapity?
No.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Okay, anything else, Ron?
If there's any other questions that might pertain to community development items, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions of community development?
Just a quick question for you. Is there a reason why I'm not being copy on some of the, like, the new business that are coming, like the coffee shops, since I sit on the committee development?
There's really, hasn't been any real need to discuss any of this thing at this point in time. If there's a need to discuss any special approvals, they may be looking for some type of tax assistance rebate because of the cost of infrastructure for that. That would be the type of thing that we would have an economic development representative's meeting to discuss before it came forward for council consideration.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any items on the agenda this evening. I just wanted to give the Council a report for the, what I consider the week of 4th of July, from the 3rd to the 7th. They did have 26 firework calls during that period. They did only write one citation. I wish there was more that was written. However, during that period, they were very busy with other calls, extraordinary. We had 327 calls during that period and capping off with a major investigation on Sunday morning. But they did 69 traffic stops, 32 traffic citations, two arrests, 56 business and house checks, and six stops of pedestrians for a total of 327. So it was a very busy week for that 40 period, so they were busy. We got through it, though. I thought we'd have a lot more fireworks calls. From my vantage point, from where I was at, I was, it was pretty, pretty loud, lots. But I've heard that various areas of the city, some had more, some had less, it was kind of up and down. But just wanted to give the Council that information. The other thing was, we are planning our, what we would like to call a neighbor's night out instead of national night out. It's kind of a little different twist on it because we are the city of neighbors. I would like to have that on September 4th from 5:00 to 8:00 here at City Hall. So we're going to, we're in early planning and prep stages right now. We did have some leftover money from last time that we kept on to on the books, so we're going to use that to start it up, and I'm hoping it's going to be a great event this year.
Well, chief, I would like to say publicly, I would be happy to help in any way I can.
Gotcha.
Volunteer.
We will take you up on that.
I will second that.
I'm definitely happy to be a part of it as well.
Awesome. Yeah, as we get closer, I'll update you guys and see where we're at. But you're doing it on a different night than we have in the past. I think we're going to have a little more success in getting some of the vendors this year, so hopefully it's going to be a good time. So that's all I have this evening.
Any questions of Police Chief?
I have a question for you. Go ahead, you go this way, because I wasn't.
Go ahead, Claudia.
Are you sure? Do you remember I called you on Friday regarding some fireworks?
Mm-hmm.
And I sent you a screenshot of the conversation between me and the resident?
I had trouble pulling that up at the time, but yeah, I did send an officer in that area.
Okay, correct. So while I was with one of those residents, because the complaint that I was getting is that her husband is a policeman.
Mm-hmm.
So they have the scanner, and she called again to let me know, "Did you call?" I said, "Yes, I did call." So has she, so has several, so there was five phone calls according to them.
Mm-hmm.
While I called, I was with her on the phone in the scanner. Westcom never called it to Crest Hill, so I have a concern with that. It doesn't matter if it's the same call, it doesn't matter if it's one or 10 times, they should report that because talking about fireworks, that is dangerous.
So.
No matter how you want to look at it, it is danger after all, it's against the law. So why I'm not reporting that, because I was like, "Are you sure they did not call it?"
Yeah.
Zero.
So I will look into that, most definitely. It may have been if it was a repeat call, that they added it to the call, and it just went right to the officer's terminal to say there's another call. I'm just saying that could have happened, but I'm going to take a look, and I'll find out about it.
But it's not Crest Hill fault, it's the Westcom.
Westcom is our dispatch.
They did not report it, the call.
Yeah.
And actually, it was my call, and I will say it was around, oh, 9:55, 10, between that.
9:10?
10:10, around that time.
I will look into it for sure, and we'll be able to pull up the CAD and see how that was dispatched out.
Yeah, and that kind of makes like the resident like not to call because they feel nothing's going to happen, and those are the continuous, you know, comments that I get.
Right.
And if the police is going to go somewhere, you know, they better take it. You know, if they're going to go out of their way.
Right.
They should take it, do that. And also, two years ago exactly, I requested the speed cart on Boreo, and I know we have construction right now. Is there a way that we can move it to McGilvary, and then after that to Zauza?
Absolutely. You want Zauza going what direction? Towards Weber?
Towards Weber.
Okay.
On that same note, I kind of like what they've done in Romeoville with the, "We take speeding seriously, this is your warning," especially on 53. Notoriously, people are doing 65 on 53, and it's a hazard. I've actually started driving exactly the speed limit just to try to slow traffic down, but it's ridiculous.
I'll take note of that, and we'll get out there.
And also, chief, where there's construction right now on NEP and Weber, it's still like a speed zone there, it looks like a Speedway.
You're saying on NEP?
Coming down Weber.
Just right at the intersection.
In the intersection with the construction.
Yeah.
Nobody is following the speed limit for construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Ed.
Wait, I had something. I'll let the ladies go first. Chief, do you know offhand if the security cameras and equipment from the old City Hall have been removed yet?
I do not know that for sure. Yeah, I don't know.
Did you check into that?
Yep.
Because I don't want that being, you know, when we, the building gets leveled, to lose out on the money than that equipment and anything else, anyone else that works for the city that can think of that's usable that might still be there for it to be taken out. Appreciate it, thank you.
Well, isn't that what's supposed to be moved to Public Works?
Yeah, I believe there was talk of that.
Correct.
There was talk of that.
What happened to that?
That's why I'm asking if the cameras have been removed in that.
Still working on that, but we will probably get those cameras in that, at Public Works or at one of our treatment plants.
Thank you.
And Ron, perhaps, this is more up your alley, but I was thinking the perennials that border the building that will probably get destroyed when it's razed, if possible, we could maybe take some of those over to Ladis Memorial Park, so I don't have to raid my entire garden. Because if they're just going to get trampled, and, you know, I'll be willing to go dig them up myself. But I don't want to do that without permission.
Yeah, well, right now, the property is still the city, so the city has the ability to go out there and take those plants. They are definitely going to be destroyed when they demolish the property and regrade the property. They're not going to try to preserve those, so I can't imagine they'd have any problems with that.
If we could come to a decision on that, because I would, I mean, there's so many bear spots over Ladis, and I can only take so much out of my yard every year. So instead of just trampling them, if we could dig some of those up, and I could bring them over there. They have hired a landscaper to work on that facility, so I could maybe have his help move them over.
I would say as long as the City Council doesn't have any opposition to having those removed, I don't see any reason why that would be a problem.
Would you say?
And we can just verify with QuickTrip that they were not intending that they were purchasing perennials, so I'm sure they will say no, but I think as a courtesy.
Yes, I don't want to mess up any contracts.
As a courtesy, since you've approved it, we can reach out to them just to let them know, and I'm sure that they'll give us a thumbs up.
And then I'll talk to the landscaper, see if we can get some of those moved.
Tina? I'm sure that's something we could do, we don't need to get the landscaper to do that.
Well, they, I've already, I've spoken to the New Regime at Ladis, and they've actually hired this guy that I got to do the landscaping on a regular basis.
Okay.
So perhaps, I'll talk to him too.
Okay.
We'll get them moved one way or the other.
There's about 120 daylilies around here.
I hate to be the mayor of bad news, but we are the order, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
We're out of order.
It was a question that was asked.
Right. The question was out of order, but you allowed it to go, so.
There's about 120 daylilies, just to let you know how many guys you're going to need there. All right. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Mayor's report, I do not have any agenda items, any questions to the city, Deputy City Clerk is with us, Nick Karen Kozurka. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening. We're looking to have a proven application for a block party on Essex Court on August, Saturday, August 10th, from 12:00 noon to 11:00 PM. They are looking to close off Essex Court to Boreo Drive, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Man-Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of a application for a block party for Essex Street and Joshua.
For Joshua.
Pardon me?
For Joshua Resto.
For Joshua Resto. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Overly?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metzman?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Anything else, Karen?
No.
Any questions of City Clerk's office? All right, thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Moving on to our City Treasurer's report, Treasurer Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Ray, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
And the Council, well, happy birthdays for you. Oh, I'm sorry, happy birthday, Tina.
Thank you.
The rest of you don't get one, but.
First item on the agenda is I seek your approval of the list of bills issued through July 16th, 2024, in the amount of $1,166,950.96.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Kubo for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call.
Jennifer Metzman?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overly?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. The next two items are just informational. One is our regular and overtime payroll from June 17th, 2024 through June 30th, total And our quarterly compensation time buyback period, excuse me, quarterly compensation time buyback for the period of April 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2024, total $15,422.51. That's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions of the treasurer?
I have a question. I know we talked today, we talked to you about, um, the interims and I find out, um, that some, some of them are paid directly from Gov HR. So they send the bill, the statement, and we pay it, but who tracks all that? So.
So there's some people that are contracted through Gov HR?
Correct.
Some people contracted directly?
Correct. But how do we track the hours? Who is the person that tracks them? Who is the person that signs on them?
In many cases, they're self-reported.
How can it be self-reported?
It would be self-reported.
So we don't have anything, anyone approving, like, who approves, example, the city manager?
I do.
You do, and who approves Ron? You do? Okay. And we keep track of all that?
Yes, I approve Dave's, Coran I believe is handled by Tony. That accurate Tony?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you keep a log on that?
Yes, there's an actual sheet that Gov HR provides, or if you want you yourself to sign off on, you know, that.
Okay, so, because I'm looking at the list of bills and I don't see anything, so what is it under? Like, if the council wants to track that, where do we see that?
It should be under MGT, the name of the company, that you pay, you send invoice, um, you send an invoice about every other month.
So it's not on this list of bills then?
So, so, uh, and one thing I might wanna suggest is that if you have a question.
Yeah.
Um, generally prior to noon on Monday, if I, if I know that question you officially ask for, it's that, uh, if council seeks to have a, uh, copy of a bill, ask for that specifically, we have three different, or a cou- at least a couple of different situations on how people are hired currently. But I can get a list of bills, when you're approving a list of bills, you don't see all the detail. This is summary. We have four hundred and some odd pages into our packet this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we provide a summary, if you see a bill from Amazon that lists eight items, there may be more to it. If you see one from MGT, if you, if anybody requests a specific invoice, it takes a request prior to noon on a, on a Monday, and I can probably produce it for the, for the evening. But the earlier the better.
I did, uh, reach out to the finance department, to the girls, just so you know. So when I come here, it's, I already exhaust my options.
If you're asking a question on a Friday, it's very tough in the middle of an audit to get the detail that you, that you seek.
Okay, before I used to ask question, an hour before the meeting I used to get it, but I will make sure, so you wanted to ask.
If it's an Amazon thing, it's a little bit easier.
A week? Well, I just need to know how long, how much I need time to ask for something.
Well Claudia, there's something that you reached out to one of the girls and you did not get. You can always reach out to me, or I even CC me on the email.
We'll do our best as quickly, and if you'd like, we can have those prepared for you, I mean, uh.
I'm just trying to understand where, where everything is, so.
There are invoices that come with, um, MGT, so we have invoices for MGT and there's also timesheets that support the hours of the invoices. So the documentation is there.
Okay. Thank you.
And just, a- a- as you recall, MGT bought out Gov HR, so if you're looking for Gov HR on the list of bills, that's probably why you're not seeing Gov HR, because it's now MGT, correct?
I found out that today when, one of the girls told me. But I still wanted to know what is the process, though we keeping log and who keeps track of everything? I mean, we keep track on our staff, so we need to keep on everything, on everyone, it's only fair.
Okay, thanks Glenn. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, we have nothing, anyone? New business, anybody?
Uh, Mayor, I had mentioned to Mike earlier in the meeting about, uh, flashing lights for the truck sites and he just sent back to me that's a hundred and fifty dollars for each one. And to go on Broadway, it's gonna be like under eight hundred dollars, so should we just go ahead and let him do it? Or do you wanna have it at work session, or how should we go forward with it?
We can't do anything tonight, it's not on the agenda.
True.
So.
But you can put it on, if there's a consensus among the, the, the council, you can put it on for the next actual meeting, unless you would prefer to discuss it at a work session. Can do that next week.
It needs to go to a work session, I think we just put it on next, for the August.
As long as there's a consensus among the council that everybody's in favor of it.
Everybody okay with that for August fifth?
That's fine, just wanna make sure that, you know. Thanks again Mike.
All right, well, we'll have that as a, as an agenda item on the fifth then. Uh, new business, anybody else?
I did send an email, um, requesting to have a, um, have, what, a diversity and, um, conversation and a, one about, um, civil service and, you know, and, and I just like to make sure we're still gonna do that one.
Yeah, we, David and I'll be talking about as the, um, we do have something that already in our point manual, with the updates, um, we might maybe expand that over, what is in more today's language for the inclusion and diversity language.
If you have something specific you wanna share, that you want us to research ahead of time, that'd be helpful.
I, I wouldn't say specifics, just a lot of stuff you don't see around Crest Hill that, you know, with two thousand twenty-four, you, you know, you wonder where is that, uh, with the rest of the world, you know? Um, hiring practices that kinda resemble the makeup of your community, things of that nature.
Uh, and, and I can give you a, at the time, I can give you a brief, uh, explanation of how the civil service process works too, so. Um, we, we really only deal with the candidates that actually show up, so if they don't show up and start the process, we, um, we're kinda limited. That has been one of the limitations with the cir- ci- civil service process.
Hold on, I, I know a lot of people getting away from that, you know, they're straight off board, post a job and people apply, but, um, and, you know, I, I know where, it's, it's a subject for another day, but it definitely have its flaws. I'll put it that way.
All right, committee liaison reports, anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents or begin with Ward one this evening, Alderman Dyke?
Uh, thank you Mayor, I just wanna wish you a happy birthday, unfortunately you're here at the meeting, you know, and you're not out with your family and that, but, uh, happy birthday and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Alder Woman Metten?
Hi, good evening. Um, so in surveying my area after a couple nights of storms, we did see quite a few tree branches down. Um, luckily, it doesn't seem to be any severe damage to anywhere. Um, I do worry about some of the trees that are overgrown on the beltways or the, the, the area between the drive, or the, between the sidewalk and the road. Um, there are quite a few that are overdue for maintenance and, um, they need to be looked at because they're gonna be a hazard if we have another storm.
Okay, if you wanna, if you have a list, it'd be great if you could put, put a list together and give it to Public Works.
I'd be happy to provide that.
Hopefully, the prediction tonight is not as, as bad as they're saying, so there won't be any more damage. Alder Man Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Woman Gazal?
Yes, just wanna announce, um, meet at the park this coming Wednesday. This is gonna be, uh, held at Renaissance Crossing Park at Zauza Drive at six PM. We will have hot dogs, refreshments, and a lot of goodies for the kids. Uh, hope to see everyone there. And, uh, I wanna thank, uh, some of the residents, I see here many faces, um, appreciate you here. Uh, and also to my future campaign manager that I see him sitting there, Ethan. Um, I call him campaign manager because he's into a lot of politics and for you being here tonight, it means the world to me, thank you so much. And, uh, happy birthday to Tina Oberlin, this coming Saturday, I knew it was your birthday and I'm gonna make sure to say it publicly, so.
Thank you.
Happy birthday Tina and happy birthday to the mayor.
Thank you. Alder Person Oberlin?
Well, I'm glad to see another year, that's all I can say. Happy to see another year and, um, glad to celebrate it.
Alderman Spitty?
Uh, just wanna wish you both a happy birthday and, uh, it's also my father's birthday, so.
Today?
Happy birthday Dad.
Happy birthday.
Today was? Alderman Kubo?
Nothing else to add, other than happy birthday Ald.
Okay, public comment, anyone like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional, Sherri?
Hello, Sherri Williams, and I just wanted to say that I'm happy that, um, we were able to sell the old city hall. However, it's another gas station, I'm just a little bit concerned that it seems like that's the only thing that we seem to be able to attract here in Crest Hill. So I'm not really sure that's the, the best location for it. I really would like to see us get some other kind of businesses in Crest Hill, we are a city of neighbors, not the city of gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you Sherri, anybody else? Uh, to our city attorney, is there a need for an executive session, Mike?
Uh, yes, there is, uh, for two C one and two C eleven.
So moved.
And Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick statement right quick? Um, our first meeting of the month, there was a lot of, there was a lot of tension in the room. And in my response to the tension that was made, I made a statement, accusing Operating Engineers Union One Fifty of not being diversified in their tradesmen. I found out and the gentleman is here tonight and I said it and I'm gonna say it again. I, I apologize because I was incorrect. Local One Fifty have made major strides in diversifying the trades, uh, that they, uh, that their membership are, are governed by. And I will, if I misspeak, I'm man enough to say when I'm wrong and I got thirteen, thirteen to stand on when I'm right. So I apologize to you and anyone I may have offended.
I would like to make a comment as well, just to echo with what Daryl have said. Last meeting was a tough meeting. It wasn't accepted and it was, uh, most of it unfair. I did wrote, uh, a statement, but I'm gonna choose not to read it tonight. I did reach out to the union representative, which is sitting here in the audience, um. I know he was supposed to say more, but I'm gonna say him, if you change your mind, that's okay, I totally understand. Um, that's how government is, we don't agree all the time. We disagree, we agree, and the long term is, I always have the faith and the best intention to do my best, not just for the residents of Crest Hill, so as for the employee. If I made a mistake by stating as a word that was taken out of context, I apologize. But I know in my heart, I have given my all. I have given my all, I give hundred, over hundred percent on a daily basis, to the resident, to the city, and also to the staff. Um, the reason why I reach out to, um, to Aaron, if you don't mind me, I'm calling you Aaron, um, because I always feel there's room for, um, to improve on both sides. You know? My statement that I made was very angry, very disappointed, very hurt by it as well. Especially since my words were taken out of context, constantly, both meetings. My intention was never to go after the staff. My intention was to show that the leadership is not there. All I wanted is for the council to be part of the memorial service and I felt that we should be part of it. And why pay overtime? And any of you can go ahead and listen to the meetings and watch me, and I know some of you have watched them. That was never an intention of our staff, I'm thankful for the staff. I think I have proven that over and over. But unfortunately, the leadership is really bad here, we have management where, like the city manager, he should be handling all these things, he should know what's going on around. But what happened, happened, I'm a big girl, I can take it. But I'm glad I reached out to Aaron and I reached out that we have a very tough conversation in the end, we disagree a lot, in the end we agree. He stated to me and during the meeting that we are cut from the same slack and I know I said to him, no, we're not. But I take that back, because I think we both are a fighter. We are a fighter for what we want. And one of the other reason why I reached out to him, because I think we should build the bridge, not burn it. We should not set up each other to fail. If we fall down, we should get up, stand up, brush it off, and do the best that we can to make the best decision for the city. We came to agreement that we're gonna work together, instead of work against each other. We might not agree all the time, but we're gonna do it in a proper way, behind closed doors, or reach out to me personally, because I'm a big girl, I can take it. It is sad that I thought that was set up and it's sad that some of you knew about it and choose to say silence. But again, if I made a mistake, I will say I made a mistake. Maybe that one word should nev- never said, but that was never my intention. In my father's memory, that was never my intention. That's my statement, but thank you Aaron for coming and sit with me for two hours fifteen minutes and I would tell, so I wanna thank you Daryl for, um, being here with me that day and for standing up for me last meeting, and so has you, Mr. Conklin. I appreciate your comments. And for the people that know me, they know in my heart who I am. Thank you.
Okay, I did have a motion for an executive session by Alder Person Oberlin, is there?
Second.
Oh, did, do you wanna say something Aaron?
Can I please make a public comment?
Sure.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Gerian and I am the local One Fifty Business Representative for Crest Hill's Public Works, as well as clerical members in Public Works, the Police Department, the Building Department, and the Finance Department. It's the same sentence I started my, uh, speech two weeks ago with. Uh, two weeks ago, I stood in this very same spot and made a lengthy statement. Since then, I've had the opportunity to meet with Alder Woman Gazal and Alderman Jefferson. We did have a lengthy, two hours and fifteen minutes, I didn't always get the time, uh, and tough, but I feel necessary conversation. I wanna express my appreciation to both Alder Persons for taking the time to meet with me, uh, and I wanna thank them for their kind words tonight. I'm looking forward to working with everybody in the city council in the future, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Aaron.
Aaron speaks highly of the gentleman that you are coming here, it's not easy, I know that. It wasn't easy the first time, and I know it's not easier this time to come in and, and make this statement. Thank you.
I, I'd like to amend one thing you said Claudia though. When we fall down, we should help each other. That's what we should be doing, when we fall down, we should help each other, not kick each other.
All right, we do have a motion for an executive session by Alder Person Oberlin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Woman Metten? Roll call please Karen.
Mark Zapiti?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Jennifer Metten?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at eight twenty-three PM.